The regular meeting of the Texaco County Arkansas Planning Commission is called over. Agendas are available on the rail, so please help yourself. We will take items as they are listed on the agenda. I will read each item and ask the person representing the request to come forward to the podium. Please state your name and address for the recording secretary. Present any information and make any comments you have about your request. Be prepared to respond to any questions that members of the planning commission may have. Do we have a roll call?
Anita Pickett.
Present.
Jason Dupree is absent. Anderson Neal.
Present.
Dr. Hickerson is absent. Chris Owens.
Here.
Cory Mobbs.
Here.
And Chairman Thomas is absent.
Okay. We have four.
We do have a quorum.
That constitutes a quorum. Item number two, adoption of the summarized minutes of the November 12, 2024 meeting. Chair would entertain a motion. If.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes.
And all you need is a voice vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes approved. Item number three, conditional use permit request by Restoration Restoration of Hope, Richard Powell, 1217 Hazel Street, Texaco County, Texas, 75501, to operate a boarding house at 416 East Fourth Street slash 317 Laurel. Property is located is legally described as all of Lot 1 and west half of Lot 2, Block 55, parcel 1021012450, and east half of Lot 2, Block 55, parcel 1012451, Section 30, Township 15 South, Range 28 West, Miller County, both of the original city containing a total of .315 acres, more or less, or two.
Um, I don't believe there's anyone here representing Mr. Powell. Do y'all want to go ahead and hear this?
Do we have any?
It didn't look like there was any opposition in the list.
There was no opposition. We got no phone calls.
Well, we might as well go ahead.
Okay. So this is the property here. This is, it is in the historic district. The historic district only gets involved if they decide to remodel the building. This right here is the Salvation Army. This is the Ahern House, which is that old historic house. The courthouse is over here. There are actually two houses on this property. There's a main house that they're wanting to operate as a boarding house, and then there's a small yellow house that they're not sure that they'll do anything with. This right now is zoned O1, and as you know, we allow boarding houses in R4, so they can also go into an O1 with a conditional use permit. This is the house, the main house that they're looking to use. This is the small yellow house. They may use it for outreach. You have any questions? We had no, we had no opposition at all, not even a phone call.
Okay. Anybody?
I thought it was a little yellow house, but it was. There's a little for rent sign in front of the yellow house.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments? Okay. This is true. Well, the chair would entertain.
Well, is there anyone out here who has any opposition?
Is there anyone here that in opposition of this request? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit, and I think we can do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Conditional use permit is approved. Item number four, rezoning request by Bill Duffer, 1804 North State Line, Texaco County, Arkansas, 71854, to rezone the property located at 803, 805, 807, and 815 from R4 medium density residential to a planned unit development for the purpose of constructing and operating an automotive shop. Property is legally described as lots 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, Block 8 of original city, Section 30 Township 15 South, Range 28 West, Miller County, and contains .708 acres, more or less, or two.
Okay. This is the property that last month we approved rezoning it, and the board turned it down. We were rezoning it commercial last month. This month, they have come back with a planned unit development. The difference being, a planned unit development, they can only build what they tell us they're going to build, where they're going to build it. When you rezone property, they could come in and do anything that's allowed in that zone. But with the PUD, if they tell us they're going to build an automotive shop, that's all they can build there. And they, they will have to get us a site plan with utilities and fire hydrants and all that on it. Since they met last time, Mr. Duffer has purchased this lot right here, which he did not have the last time he came before us. The plan for his building, and Travis, make sure I've got this right, the plan for their building is on this end of the property, fronting onto Eighth Street, right? It's zoned R4 right now. It butts up to C3, and Mr. Duffer owns a business right here. There's water and sewer available on both sides of the property. This is the property. There's been no other interest in developing this property. This is their tentative beginning of a site plan. This is Eighth Street here, Laurel. They've got four lots. They would build on this first lot here, a proposed parking lot, and then the actual building. It would all be fenced in. This is a new business looking to come into town, and this is the proposed elevation drawings of the building. This is the front and the rear, and then these would be the sides. Travis is here to represent Mr. Duffer. Do you have any questions for him?
All right.
Is that four bay doors on the left and the right side for getting in the vehicles?
Yeah, both sides of the building have overhead doors, so you'll be able to literally open up doors on both sides and drive all the way through if you want to.
Travis, if you would, state your name and.
Oh, I'm Travis Phoenix. I'm representing Bill Duffer.
And your address, please?
4104 East Ninth Street, Texaco County, Arkansas.
All right. Anybody else have any more question? The addition of that, of the other lot, is that the basic difference between, from what you proposed at the last meeting?
Yeah, the last meeting, he didn't own that lot of land and really wasn't even thinking about buying it. And he initially had the building facing Laurel Street, and by buying that lot of land, allowing him to turn it, so it actually faces Ninth Street, which actually works out better for the building anyways. But that also makes it, so it's not spot zoning. The, he owns all the way to Eighth Street there. On the other side of Eighth Street's commercial, the property next to it, which is Napa and all that along State Line is up there is commercial, so it makes sense to zone it. Well, we're not doing commercial this time as a PUD, but it makes sense for the zoning.
And then the entrance will be from 67 Eighth Street?
Eighth Street, yeah. Mm-hmm. And all the parking and stuff will be along Eighth Street also, just like they are in front of Napa there. They'll park right in front of the building there.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Do we have any, anyone in opposition? Please comment, state your name and your address.
My name is Brenda Bursey, 3720 County Avenue.
Okay.
I didn't know I was going to come before you this soon after the last meeting.
Okay.
I don't know how many of you had the opportunity to review the city council meeting, what we voiced our opposition to this, which they denied. My sentiments hadn't changed. And I conclude that you, the commission, and the board works in coordination with the development of plan for the city. In saying that, this is a gateway to the city. It's been designated on your comprehensive plan. Doesn't indicate that you're going to put a garage in the gateway. This development is supposed to be under the comprehensive plan, supposed to be a place of area for pedestrian traffic, aesthetics. Now, we are talking about putting up, I guess you didn't mention a fence under this PUD that's going to be included. I don't know if the railing, iron fencing with the barbed wire on top.
It'll be a solid.
That's not, that's not aesthetic for the city gateway. That picture that she showed is not how the site looks now. There has been preparation done at the site. Was a permit given for that before the zoning had been approved? This rezoning has not been fitting the community. The area, the neighborhood, is going to be a self-serving business to work on his cars, they say. It's not benefiting, the gateway is provide services to the community, build up the community. It's not building up the community, it's building up itself. I would like to ask the planning department with their approval that how is this rezoning falling in line with your comprehensive plan? Since it's a gateway and since it's a designated area for the city. This area is considered downtown core, and you want to put a garage with a metal fence and a barbed wire in the gateway? Drive down State Line, and I'm not for sure, but correct me if I'm wrong. Look on Texas side, there's businesses and houses. Look on Arkansas side, this gentleman that's wanting this has down on Arkansas side, iron fences with barbed wire. So if I'm a visitor coming into town, I'm going to look at one side of State Line, say that's Arkansas, with barbed wire fences, with the fences and barbed wire. What am I, what kind of presentation is that giving for the city? Now, he's wanting to come over into the neighborhood and put the same thing. It's not a pleasing picture of the city. Garages with iron fences with barbed wire. I thought that to be on the same accord that the city planning was guided by the comprehensive plan. This is for land usage for long-term community needs, not short-time individual gains. While changes will occur, it should always be amended through the comments of the community and its betterment. I see last time they didn't have a submitted plan, and I'm happy to see that they showed one this time. Last time, the chairman said that that was not their concern. And as I mentioned, groundwork has already been done. Do you think this is the best use of our land, environmental safety, and for the operations of downtown? Will this garage provide a high quality of life enjoyed by Karen and future residents, which is in the comprehensive plan? Vision is for, the vision of the company is enduring neighborhoods, quality of life and images, and infrastructure and health. I don't see any of that coming from a garage. Downtown gateway area has specific items listed as recommendations, which one does not include a garage. If you look on the comprehensive plan, downtown gateway area, none of the items listed indicate anything as having a garage in that area. So I am voicing the same sentiments I had before. I think that the residential area should stay residential, and we should be concerned about, and that's in the comprehensive act, to building up residential areas in that specific area, which has been designated in the comprehensive plan, and to stay as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Ray Bursey, and I live at 3720 County, and I agree with everything that was just said. But I would like for you all to look at 19th through 17th on the Arkansas side. They own that property, and the same thing that they're presenting here can be done there. They already in the community, but in the community of 19th through 17th, and they have enough space and land to do exactly what they're speaking of here. And that's my only comment, and I agree, and I'm not for this to be done. Thank you.
Mr. Bursey, can I ask you a question? I drove over and looked at the property and stuff and the location and all of that, and how the shop would face Eighth Street.
Correct.
And then I looked at the corner, there's a Goodwill there, which is a shop. Then I looked at Napa, which is a shop. And then I drove down the street, and I looked at the community that has, has gone bad, so to speak.
Correct.
What is the plan for the community to make that better? Everything is on the opposite side of what the shop will be, but what, what's the plan for that to be made better? And I remember the old daycare center where my daughter went 40 years ago.
Correct.
And so I know that, you know, for me, if it were possible, it just would need to come down, if that was just up to me.
Okay, I can't speak on the daycare center, because it is a, I think, a nonprofit organization that owns it, and when I checked into it, all the members on that board have passed except one, and her name is Mrs. Darcy Watson. Okay, but they're looking to see if they have the right where they can either sell it or tear it down right now. And my wife and myself, we're looking into putting, building something on our property.
Well, let me ask you this also. To where that property is, where is your property?
My property would be.
Say that again.
Two lots, two lots over.
Across the street?
No, 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 same side.
Same side.
Running down Laurel. We bumped the old ore school that you're speaking of.
Gotcha.
Is that the one where the little house is butted up next to a fence with trees as high as the fence row?
That's owned by Ms. Sanders.
That's one more down. Okay.
And then we bumped that property.
Gotcha.
And that property bumps Mr. Duffer's property.
Gotcha. Okay.
One more question.
Go.
Is it anybody residing in your property?
No.
No. The only people residing are the three houses across the street on Laurel?
Correct.
And those are rent houses? Or do people own them and live there?
There's people living in them, and the house next to the ore is the lady passed about three or four months ago.
And then those two little houses on Eighth Street, those are falling in.
So how many, how many vacant houses would you say are in that area?
On that side, one, two. All of them are vacant right now. Two are not. Two ladies passed in 24.
Gotcha.
So you guys still don't agree, even though they are going to be bound to what they say they're going to do?
The only reason I don't is because the property that I just spoke of, 19th through 17th, they went in that community and did the same thing. Bought up the property, leveled it off, and now it's caused, and it's enough property to do the same structure that they are presenting right here. And it's next to the business that they're running that does that.
Did I hear this right, that this would be a new business, a new tax income for the city, new property taxes, new personal property taxes, new sales tax, more income?
And this is a companion business.
Okay.
Tag team. Mr. Duffer owns this property here, and this would be a companion business to that property.
Gotcha.
There was an article in the paper about degeneratification, as where zoning changes made in a community, usually is marginalized community. Individuals come in, change the zone, change the environment of the community because of money. Because they have the money. Which is usually to marginalize communities, which we know that this is because of the age and people have moved out. But we would like to see revitalized with housing, and that's what we plan on doing, is putting housing there. I don't want a garage with fenced in, metal fencing and barbed wire.
And which property is yours?
The same side, when you go beyond what they've cleared the dirt.
Okay.
Go beyond that.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
Our, there's commercial property, there's residential property. We want, don't want to be forced out, because if one comes in, the next one going to come in, and we're going to be pushed out.
Let me ask you this, Ms. Brenda. Did this spark the move to do something different in the community, or were you guys already planning on?
We were already planning, and Ms. Thornton is already planning to build.
Gotcha.
Does, Ms. Thornton, does, how many properties does she have, just one or?
She has just two lots, I think, that's on the opposite side of the street.
And they are vacant right now?
Yes. But like I said, the comprehensive plan and the gateway plan for the city, this is a gateway community, which doesn't include what you're trying to put in. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Give you some background. 817 Laurel is tagged, 823, the Bursey's house is tagged, 836 is tagged, 831, the ore school is tagged. The three houses, 817, 823, and 836 are going on demolition list this year.
Okay.
Gotcha.
There will not be any barbed wire around the top of the fence, and you don't have to have a permit for dirt work before you go into a permit. There's empty lots on the other side of the road. three or four houses on that street that somebody's living in. And most of them are in pretty bad repair.
Which of the houses are going up, the, that are going on the demolition?
Down, keep going down.
Are they on the picture or are they not on the picture? I'm sorry, I'm visual.
Distance page.
Okay.
Distance page.
Okay.
One up here and one down up here.
Okay. All right. Yes, I can look at the pictures. Did not. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other?
Yeah, you were asking if this is a.
State name again.
Travis Phoenix. You were asking if that was a companion business or something. It is. He's putting in a garage that will service vehicles before he puts them on his car lot. So this will help create more sales for his car lot. And currently, he's moving about 40 cars a month, and I estimate that somewhere between, somewhere around $40,000 a month in sales tax that's generated for the city. So I argue this is exceptionally good for the city. I have a couple of things I'd like to hand you all. This is the property information off ACT Data Scout for Ms. Bursey and her husband. They're here tonight, and you can see that they own 823 Laurel, but their mailing address is 3720, to which they've already admitted they don't live at this property. If you turn to the picture at the back, though, there's two pictures. The first is the front of their house. This is typical for this street. Most of the houses on the street have boarded up windows and doors. They're totally out of compliance with the city, and these are the ones Roger is stating are tagged, be torn down. And if you turn to the very last page, you'll notice the meter on the side of the house is missing. This thing hasn't had power in years.
Mr. Roger, what's the cost to the city to tear down houses versus having owners tear them down?
It's basically the same, completely covered, like a good cover.
Gotcha.
The same one, where you tear them down very fast.
Okay. I just saw there was asbestos listed, so I know that's a big no-no, safety-wise.
But I think you can see from these pictures and stuff that any kind of economic development on this block is a good thing. There, there literally has not been any kind of new construction on this block for probably, I'm guessing, four to five decades. And even the houses on that street haven't really had any kind of significant maintenance or anything done, probably in two or three decades. I mean, they are really in horrible shape. Literally, most of them, I drove through there today, and I think I counted on, on that one block of Laurel where, where that building is, the side of the building is going to face, I think there was three houses that looked like they were inhabited. Everything else was totally uninhabitable and were falling in. Y'all have any more questions?
I have any.
Okay.
Could you state your name, Ms. Bursey, so we just put it right?
Ms. Bursey. I, I live at 3720 County, and I don't live on Laurel, but I own the property on Laurel. And I appreciate him showing my houses how they look. I know how they look, thank you very much. Like I said, we have the intent to build, and Sister Thornton has the intent to build. And just like I said, the city's comprehensive plan for this area is a gateway, not a garage. That's the comprehensive plan. So if you go against the comprehensive plan, then you voiding what you've made this 20-year You're going against what you planned for. I would like for this area to be built up as a neighborhood.
Do you have a timeline of when you want to build?
We, we, this can be done.
Like, do we have a plan?
Yes, we, we have a plan.
Six months, a year?
A year.
Okay.
But we, but we're going to try to work with the neighborhood, with the rest of the individuals in the neighborhood to get it rebuilt.
Are you gonna tear down the house, or are you gonna have the city tear down the house since it's attached?
No, the city's not gonna tear down the house. No, no. The city has houses all over town that's been on their tear-down plan for two or three years.
Yeah, I've seen a couple.
But like I was saying, gentrification, you'd go in minority neighborhoods and take over.
Ms. Bursey, what, what would prevent, if, what would prevent you from building in, in, on your property if this prop, if this project was approved?
It would not keep me, I'm saying the aesthetics of it. Would you want a garage next down the street from you with cars? I mean, they said they're gonna fence it in, I guess. He said you're not gonna see cars, all right. The environment, environment of a fenced-in area with a car lot next in the neighborhood is not aesthetic pleasing, which is in your comprehensive plan.
Right, thank you. Are there any other comments, negative or positive, for the project? Seeing none, the, the chair would, you have any other question of commissioners? The chair would entertain a motion.
I motion to approve.
I second.
Motion and second to approve?
Anita Pickett?
Yes.
Anderson Neal?
Yes.
Chris Owens?
He looking at me like, yes.
And Cory Mobs?
Yes.
The rezoning is, is approved. And of course, this is not the last, this has to go before the... Yeah, so you, if you still have another opportunity to, to make your wishes known with the board. But, thank you. Item number five, ordinance revision. Request by the Texarkana, Arkansas Board of Directors to revise the notification area for special use permits from 100 feet to 300 feet.
Okay. When we did the special use permit, so you all know that when people request a rezoning or conditional use or special use, we notify people within a certain distance of that property. So when we did the special use permit, we set a 100-foot notification area. The Board of Directors has come back and asked us to increase that to 300 feet. And the main reason is if you get a subdivision that the houses are a good distance apart, 100 feet doesn't capture many people. So this is a request by the Board, and we would just be changing that to 300 feet.
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
I like it.
The chair would entertain a motion?
So moved, a second.
Moved and second to approve this request?
Anita Pickett?
Yes.
Anderson Neal?
Yes.
Chris Owens?
Yes.
Cory Mobs?
Yes.
All right. Item number six, ordinance revision. Request by planning and zoning to create an ordinance establishing a notification area for conditional use permits to be 300 feet.
So our notification area for conditional use permits has typically been 100 feet. In order to keep conformity between the special use permit and the conditional use permit, we wanna increase it to 300 feet. However, in the process of researching this, I realized there's not even an ordinance that requires us to notify people for conditional use permits. So this is a request to create that ordinance that we would have a 300-foot notification area for conditional use permits.
Any questions, Jamie?
Is, is that supposed to say 100 in the section, or is it supposed to be 300?
Oh, I changed it on mine, it's 300.
Okay. Okay, that was my only question.
Chair would entertain...
Yeah, that was my mistake.
The chair would entertain a motion?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Do you have a vote?
Anita Pickett?
Yes.
Anderson Neal?
Yes.
Chris Owens?
Yes.
And Cory Mobs?
Yes.
Ordinance revision approved. Item seven, orders, ordinance revision, revise special use permit ordinance to allow for family homes, group homes, and group care facilities in O1, office quiet, C1, general commercial, C2, central business, and C3, open display commercial with a special use permit.
So the way the ordinance is written now, anything that you allow in R4, you can do in these four commercial zones with a conditional use permit. So we have allowed boarding houses in R4. So you could do a boarding house in any of these with a conditional use permit. However, with the group homes, the family homes, and the family care facilities, we don't do a conditional use permit, we do a special use permit for them. So what we are asking is that we would have that same allowance for the R4 in those commercial zones, but instead of a conditional use, it would be a special use. Because that's the way it's laid out in the rest of the ordinance.
Any questions? Chair would entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the ordinance revision?
Anita Pickett?
Yes.
Anderson Neal?
Yes.
Chris Owens?
Yes.
And Cory Mobs?
Yes.
Revisionist is approved. Item number eight, any comments, Jamie? Okay. Our next meeting date will be February 11th to 2025. And the chair would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
So February 11th?
February 11th.